Good morning.
Thanks Donna. Welcome, it's Thursday, January 24th. It is approximately 7:45 PM. This is a meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board. Just a reminder that this meeting is being audio and videotaped. So we have a pretty light agenda here this evening. First item of business on the agenda is the continued discussion involving Dunkin' Donuts and a proposed drive-through layout. The Planning Board has actually seen a few of them at this point in time. So I guess what I'd like to do is turn it over to our technical consultant, Tom Houston, from PSC, just to update the board and all of you on where the project stands because we have no one here this evening from Dunkin' Donuts. So, Tom?
Mr. Chairman, during the time since the last meeting, I had a conversation with the applicant, I had a conversation with his site engineer, and we discussed the detailed requirements for a queuing analysis to determine whether after the proposed site improvements, the queue will remain on the site and not extend back into any public way. Thereafter, I received a call from an engineer at BHB. The applicant had asked BHB for a proposal to do the queuing analysis, and I reviewed the requirements with him. So I would anticipate that shortly we would be receiving the analysis of the number of vehicles in queue with the various site plans that are under consideration.
Okay, and so you've presented the board with this document. So where, what's he?
That actually, Mr. Chairman, is another queuing analysis.
See some nice colors on this.
I know.
Red, green, and blue. Okay.
This would have been nice for the Dunkin' Donuts one.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. So are there any questions about this, at this point? Any further consideration, you know, people have had since our last meeting, since I saw Michelle out on Main Street? Yeah, you were. Yes, you were driving safely. Well, you actually parked in the middle of the road safely, waiting to turn at the Dunkin' Donuts. But, okay, so we're gonna continue this probably at our next meeting. Okay, next item of business is a review of Gumps Farm Recreation Area Special Permit. The Planning Board did vote on this special permit application at our last meeting. It was approved, and since that time, Gino, you've written it up?
Yes.
Right? And I know there was a question a few days ago about the stops, the wheel stops, basically, which are in lieu of the curbing. So you're good with that in terms of the decision?
Well, I didn't know if that was something that needed to be incorporated into the decision or not, since I wasn't here at that last meeting. So that was my only question. I mean, if it's just a matter of something that they're implementing, it doesn't need to be a condition, then it's fine. But if we need to put it in as a condition, we just need to add it.
Well, it should be a condition.
But is it part of the plan?
Well, it was, yeah, it was consistent with the whole conversation in terms of whether or not curbing was required. So I don't know at any point we had the conversation about whether they had to be there, but it was, yeah, it was part of the plan. I assume it's on the drawing, I assume, but it was part of the discussion, which ultimately led to the decision by the zoning enforcement officer that curbing was not required. Now, there were other reasons for that as well, in terms of the curbing not required, but I don't know that it would be appropriate to exclude that from.
I mean, right in the second paragraph on page two, you could always just add a line if you want to. That seems to be the only place you get into detail.
Yeah, part of the rationale for not having the curbing with curb stops is because you cannot draw lines, that it would differentiate the parking spaces, and they absolutely have to have those.
Okay. Well, it's easy to, under, there's only two conditions now. We could just add a, actually, I would recommend this condition be B and B, what's now BBC, and just that curb stops shall be provided at each parking space. Something as simple as that would probably do it.
Where is it?
Third Avenue.
Oh, okay. It's fine.
Well, there's one other thing that we asked for, and that was that when the zoning enforcement officer sort of gave his approval of this, it wasn't clear that he was saying that they didn't have to have curbing. Did we ever get anything back from him?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. No, I wrote that up to him, and he said that.
Oh, okay, 'cause I don't remember seeing the clarification.
And I think at that time, he reiterated the educational decision from Magione or whoever that town council was at that time.
So in other words, we had all the discussions along the lines of technical, there were some technical considerations and practical considerations, and ultimately, he determined that it was exempt from all these things anyway. But that doesn't mean that all that dialogue was unnecessary, because I think in a practical sense, with the wheel stops, I mean, they should be there, and then you identified why. So, okay, so you're gonna insert that, Gino?
Didn't they also ask for a different kind of substrate, in terms of the amount of fill, like from 12 inches to 6 inches of gravel or something?
They did, but that's the way it's depicted on the drawings.
Okay, so we don't need to make note of that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Anything else, Gino? Any other questions about this?
No, that should do it.
Good. This may be the shortest Planning Board meeting in history.
I don't need to take a motion on that or anything since we're out of this.
We already approved it.
Yeah, can you guys move to approve the decision with that condition about the wheel?
Oh, the amended decision?
Yeah, and I'll have you sign the signature page, and Gino and I can fix that up Monday morning.
Fine, with me anyways.
We're gonna move to amend the notice of decision number 2012-05 to include the approval of curb stops in lieu of, can we just say curb stops?
As a condition.
As a condition, under the decision.
The special permit.
Okay, so referred to as a special, it's still a decision, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
Any second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, good.
Continued discussion regarding cottage car wash.
Now you can look at your nice colored map.
Yeah, well.
Why is this here?
I, you know, I just kind of threw the.
I'm guessing, but I wanna know.
Yeah. The, we had some discussion about whether, should the site plan, for other reasons, be modified to have a direct entrance from Pine Street. There was a concern that this would measurably impact the queuing that was available on the site. So I evaluated that. The alternative entrance is just something that I came up with. That's nothing that anyone has formally proposed at this point, but it does appear that there is not a measurable difference in the available vehicle queuing, whether you come in through the Joe Fran driveway or directly from Pine Street. There is 20 vehicles in queue with the alternative coming directly in from Pine. There are 22 vehicle queuing spaces available if you come in through the Joe Fran driveway. The place on this drawing where I've shown a parallel vehicles in queue, queuing in both lanes, that spot is actually indicated on the approved site plan as the place where a dual queue is to begin. There's a sign on the drawing there says, "Form two lines" at this point. So that's where I started showing vehicles parallel to each other. But although it doesn't provide for it on the drawing, if things get really hectic, you could probably have that double queue extend back further with the current site plan, and you would not have that option with the alternative site plan, because vehicles have to exit at the same place that they enter there. So there's not the ability to extend that dual queue back as far as you could with the current site plan. So if you look at the way it's supposed to work, there's only a two-vehicle difference, but there's some hidden capacity.
Well, it's two vehicles to the property line. It looks like if you went all the way to the driveway.
Yeah, well, that's another thing. It's actually just a shade. The standard spacing that all these analysis use is 25 feet. That allows for about eight or nine feet of headway, because people don't drive right up to the bumper of the car in front of them. So 25 feet is the standard. The distance between the property line and the next driveway is 40 feet. So it's two vehicles, maybe a little bit short of that, so you could get another vehicle or two in there.
John, when you said "we," who's "we" discuss this?
The chairman.
Yeah, let me just walk us back here. So I believe it was our last Planning Board meeting, Mr. Roy was present. Is that correct? Was that the last Planning Board meeting?
Yeah, I think it was.
And Mr. Brabens from the car wash was present. And so at that meeting.
Prior to your meeting with them out on site.
Yeah, that meeting was a Tuesday night meeting, which is why Gino wasn't present, because she wasn't able to attend the Tuesday. So I had offered to meet with Mr. Roy on the Friday morning, which I did, and Tom Houston was present, as was Chief Stone, and I believe it's a colleague, an employee of Joe Fran was there, it was a female. I didn't catch her name. And Jack Scott also stopped by, because he's involved in the development, and I don't know the nature of his involvement, but I think it was appropriate that he be present. So, you know, we had conversation about the common drive and some of the concerns regarding site distance, and I would say to make a long story short, you know, Mr. Roy felt that it would not be in the best interest of Joe Fran to proceed with the deed for the common drive, the easement. So there was some conversation at that point between Mr. Scott and Mr. Roy, where Mr. Scott made it clear that Mr. Brabens was looking to continue the development of the property, and there were some imminent construction plans, and access through that easement was going to be necessary for the project construction to continue. So at that point, Mr. Roy agreed to put in writing some of his concerns, which in fact he did. And at that point in time, he felt that, or he stated that, he was not interested in working out a compromise solution in terms of site distance vis-à-vis the evergreens that are present along Pine Street, because we felt that that was an opportunity, either through pruning or removal, that that could improve the site distances, the site distance if you're pulling out of the proposed car wash, looking right towards Route 1 in that direction. There's some evergreens. Mr. Roy said that those trees were planted as part of the tree planting requirements of the Planning Board, going back to, this goes back to year 2000, you know, that timeframe. So he was not interested in seeing those trees removed or those trees pruned. But this meeting took place now, almost two weeks ago, so there's been continued dialogue here, I believe, between Mr. Roy and his legal counsel. I'm not privy to those communications. I'm not 100% certain that that's the case, but my sense is that that probably is the case. And I would think Mr. Scott and Mr. Brabens have also been looking at what their options are in terms of trying to move this process forward. So I guess that's the long answer to the question. The questions that Mr. Roy has expressed, those have been forwarded to Jack Hathaway and have been presented to Town Council, and they have to do with shared costs, shared responsibility for the common drive. Mr. Roy's asking, you know, who's going to pay for maintenance cost, i.e. snow removal? How is his business gonna be protected if some incident takes place on the common drive? So I've asked that the town's legal counsel do what they can to help answer those questions to the best of their ability, and try to see if that might move the process forward, and perhaps get Mr. Roy to the point where he feels that, you know, some type of compromise can be reached with Mr. Brabens and Mr. Scott. So that's really the extent of my knowledge of the project.
So, it's an order of conditions. If any other business went down and said, "Tell with this site plan. I'm moving this here," and tough luck. So you're not gonna enforce your orders of conditions anymore?
Who are you asking?
No, I mean, it's hypothetical.
The chairman of the planning board.
No, 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 but the point is, you're currently the chair, I'm directing it to you, yes.
Seems like a cut and dry case.
Well, I made the statement.
It is a cut and dry case, I think.
I mean, I made the statement, and I think it's correct, that my role in participating at that site meeting was really to try to facilitate some type of resolution, that in fact, at this point in time, it's not a Planning Board matter, but I think, I speak for, you know, my fellow members of the board, consultants, that, you know, we're happy to do what we can to try to bring this to, you know, a mutually acceptable resolution. But I think in fact, this is not, right now, a matter for the Planning Board. This is something that unfortunately, it may end up getting resolved, one way or the other, through the attorneys, and.
But there is an incomplete condition of his site plan that has not been done. So that is a condition of the Planning Board.
But it's not a Planning Board issue.
Well, it should be.
Who enforces it?
We are not the enforcers of, I mean, that zoning enforcement officer.
Back when you do, well, you know what, none of us were on the board at that time. I guess I have a question for Steve, 'cause he was. Back in 2000, how were they handing out occupancies at that time? Was it a vote of the Planning Board, or was the building inspector just doing it, or? I thought you guys almost, if I, I'm trying to remember, but there was almost some back-and-forth going on at that time.
There was, particularly with that site.
Okay.
Because there were actually multiple site plans for that site, because there was a lot of different work that was done on different occasions. So I don't know how there was an overlook of that easement for the frontage road. I kinda understand how that could have possibly have gotten by, but it is still an order of condition. Planning Board order of condition.
But it's not a matter right now for the Planning Board. It's, you know, the zoning enforcement officer is aware of it. To my knowledge, he has not been asked to take action. I don't view the role of the Planning Board, I don't view it our role, to ask the zoning enforcement officer to take action. I mean, the parties, the aggrieved, you know, may certainly do that. Maybe they've done that, I don't know. But I don't view this as a role or responsibility for the Planning Board.
I think other than to point out to him that a condition that was required hasn't been met, and.
And I did. I spoke with Bob Bullock about that, yeah.
And what's his answer?
That he would take direction from Town Council if, in fact, you know, he was asked to take action. Because in fact, Mr. Scott told Mr. Roy at the property that morning that that, in fact, might happen, but whether or not it has, I don't know.
I saw that in the email. That was written down, that somebody had said that to Mr. Roy.
That his occupancy permit was.
That, that they, if they have to, that they will go for relief through the town in, by having the occupancy permit.
That email was from me. I wrote up.
Right, right.
A very extensive, I guess, call it the minutes of the meeting, if you will, the site meeting, and in fact, that was part of it, that I made it clear that those statements did in fact, were in fact made.
So, you know, one outcome of this is that, you know, he builds the car wash exactly as he's designed it, and he just operates it without pruning the trees, or mitigating any of the signage, or, you know, visual clearance, and it is what it is. Another option is some in-between that Joe Fran compromises. But I guess I'm interested in talking about this option a little bit, the redesign. And understand, there's, I guess I have a few questions about it, the new drive that you've shown. I thought at some point someone had mentioned that a traffic analysis had shown some potential conflict with the street.
Valley Road.
Valley Road, kind of across the way. So is this considering, you know, potential conflicts, other than just getting it off the Joe Fran drive?
What the alignment indicates here, and it's indicated in the black line here, that would be the center line of a conceptual driveway, and again, nobody's proposed this at this point, but the center line of the site driveway is collinear with the center line of Valley Street, if it's projected to the center line of Pine Street. So what it does show is you can line them up. So it's a decent traffic condition.
Is there any infrastructure in that section right now?
Yeah, there's a hydrant, there's a light pole. They're existing. I don't think he's built anything there at this point. What he has done.
What about drainage, septic, anything like that?
It's not in the ground.
Okay. No, but is it planned for?
Yes. I didn't look specifically, but yes, there's.
So there's gonna be some redesign, as well as some replacement somewhere?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so there'd be that to be considered. I mean, the queuing thing doesn't really bother me that much that you lose, you know, a couple vehicles, because honestly, that anybody's gonna, if you just looked at the outer line alone, and don't double it up, you're 10 red cars before you get to the blue. Even if the car wash takes three minutes, are you really gonna wait 30 minutes to get your car washed? That's only in a single-line queue. I mean, coffee's one thing, but a car wash can wait for another day. So I do.
He does have two wash bays.
And that's the thing, that's without it even being doubled.
And there's the potential to open a third one. Right now, it's slated for storage, but if he has, if he's successful enough, he could open a third bay there, so it would improve the processing time.
Right, which I question if it really would get much further out into the street, without people just being frustrated and not waiting. And, you know, does Norfolk really have the demand for 20, 30 cars at a car wash? It's not too many places I've seen them.
Two in this meeting wanted to go.
Except for Kip's is right next door.
Yes.
You drop your kids off and hop over to the car wash. All 100 of you.
But I think that, you know, the cost implications alone to his design could be significant enough to potentially prohibit this, specifically given how far along he is in his process.
Well, not only that, but, I mean, it's fine to discuss it, guys, but no one's requested a modification.
Right.
That's correct.
But if we could suggest ideas to get them there, and that's what we try to do with Joe Fran, suggest some ideas, he's not willing. I think it was a valid exercise, and.
Yeah, I mean, we've tried to mitigate it, brought multiple meetings, you've had them in here. I mean, what more can you do? Think of the man-hours outside of our decision that you've already spent on the Planning Board.
So, you know, just to be clear, I did ask that Tom spend a little bit of time, just so that we understand what options may exist if, in fact, it comes to this. I mean, I'm sympathetic to the developer here, because right now, they're kind of stuck. I mean, they've spent quite a bit of money developing the site to the point it's at, and it's gonna be difficult for them to continue construction without access to the property through the easement, so.
Is Joe Fran physically blocking him?
Well, you've actually got, you know, you've got a curb, grass, well, there may not be a curb, but there's grass, there's a light pole, I mean, if you drive by that area, you'll see they've got, they use for like spill containment, those socks, if you will, along the edge, that is the, that's the perimeter of the easement that.
And he doesn't have the right to develop that? I mean, I would.
It's not his property. He'd be trespassing if he did anything on that property in the context of.
But that falls within the easement.
That hasn't been recorded.
That hasn't been recorded, right.
So if you go legally, technically, he would be trespassing. Because, yeah, it means, so Joe Fran could slap him with a trespassing, and then we could slap Joe, or not we, but the town could slap Joe Fran with it, shut him down, and it could just be one ugly mess. Nobody gets to do anything.
Yeah, I mean, it is the Planning Board, you know, 10 years, 12 years ago, almost 13 maybe, you know, that project was approved, the car wash, Mr. Brabens, Mr. Scott, I don't know the relationship there, but they've got an approved project, and I think, you know, at such time, if they feel that they need to come back to the board to pursue other options, so be it. You know, we'll be that much more prepared to discuss other, you know, other options. But that hasn't happened. I don't believe it's the role of the Planning Board to try to influence the process right now. I think unfortunately, it rests with the parties, and probably their legal counsel, the recommendations in terms of next steps. I mean, it's a chess game, so.
I see the next step being, the car wash becoming the plaintiff.
Probably. You're probably correct. But we'll see, you know, we'll see.
Might just go ahead and start the work and see what happens.
And at that point, it's gonna force it into it. I mean, I don't think Roy would be that stupid to push this far without thinking that he could probably pull something on the easement. I don't know if there's a filing time or not. I don't know, following up.
No, it's been made clear to him in writing that if he does that, they're gonna pull his occupancy permit.
But after 12 years? I don't know.
Do you know if the legal counsel looked into any statute of limitations, Donna?
I know, normally for a zoning violation, once, I think it's, depends on whether a building permit is issued, and I don't know if you would count the building permit for the building, whereas this is not building-related, but normally, one, I think it's six years if there's a building permit, and 10 years if there's no building permit, you no longer have the ability to take action against the violator on a zoning violation. So I, I mean, Town Council would assess, and I assume this would be a zoning violation, because it's through zoning that the site plan was approved, and the condition wasn't complied with.
I've never, and, this is fascinating, and it's great education, but I can't even, I've never been involved in something like this before, so. And unfortunately, you've got a litigant that has plenty of money. Just for interest. got a litigant that has plenty of money. Just for interest, Joe Fran assessed that, like, 11 million. He pays $183,000 a year in taxes here. I mean, so, he probably feels the right to do what he wants on his property.
I know, he never wanted that easement. He, from the beginning, when it was a condition, he was opposed to it.
Frontage road? Come on!
Well-
Steve.
I mean, it just, just want to be clear. I mean, you know, he was gracious. I mean, he was pretty direct about the end of the conversation, Mr. Roy, in terms of, you know, where he stood, at least as of that meeting two weeks ago. But he was gracious, he was there, you know, he greeted us when we arrived. So, you know, he's gonna be treated with respect and listened to. I mean, he's important, his business is important to the town. So, at this point, I'm not sure what the role is for the planning board. You know, I've documented to the best of my ability the conversations, and made them available to Jack Hathaway for review by town council. So, so this is really something, I guess, for the back pocket, so to speak, in case, you know, this thing takes a new direction. We'll at least have some perspective.
So when the site plan for car wash was being approved by us, was it just the assumption that the easement had been put into place, when we were looking at that?
Of course.
Yeah.
One other thing, on the ongoing maintenance and liability exposures that Mr. Roy brought up. I mean, this is the whole function of having a public notice, as in a butter. And he should have been party to the car wash site plan review. Because at that time, these types of conditions could have been addressed in a public way.
But I'm sure he was notified if he doesn't want to come forward and say that he never did his easement. That's his right.
Maybe that could have been the reason. But he was here right after that, though. I mean, he came to a meeting, what was it?
As soon as it was closed.
Yes.
Yeah, isn't that interesting, though? Smells fishy.
Okay. Anything else about the car wash?
I don't know. This is gonna be interesting, how this works out.
It's really too bad.
I'd like to see a car wash there, because-
I know, it's really too bad. I feel bad.
And I think we could use that. They can do pretty well now.
I mean, prior to this cold, I think they were just about at the point where they had to start moving, you know, towards roadway to get through.
Yeah.
Tony can't keep his equipment there.
Okay.
Interesting.
Okay, I think I see your handwriting here. Oak Knoll Estate subdivision plan for endorsement. It says next meeting? Okay, next meeting. So I guess that brings us to new business, unless I'm missing anything. New business? Bets? Is that?
Yep.
Okay. What we got?
Minutes? Who's clerk?
Oh, great.
I was. You weren't. But I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I mean, I've read them. Did you read them? Yeah, I, I just wondered if anybody had any issues.
I didn't see anything in here that was, that had to be changed.
I'll second.
Well, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the, the meeting minutes from Thursday, April 26, 2012.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I'll abstain since I wasn't on the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome.
And Michelle abstained, right, Bets?
You were at the meeting, though?
I think I was, out in the audience, right?
Yep.
I was made aware of something that's really a board of health matter, not so much a planning board matter. But I've spoken with Jeff Kane, so just to bring folks up to speed, one of the affordable houses, the one over on Mirror Lake, there's a fairly substantial retaining wall that's part of the septic plant. And it's creating some concern for the abutter, I think rightfully so. It's pretty, pretty tall, the wall. It hasn't gotten to that height yet, it's under construction, so.
Does the neighbor, has it blocked their window or something?
Yeah.
I remember when they came to one of our meetings.
So you do, I remember the project, it's-
I remember when they came in.
Was that long ago? Wow. So- Yeah. Right up against, it's like, not far from the property line either, and their window isn't far from the property line or something?
Their set down.
Yeah. At the time, I thought he was more worried about drainage, with the wall going in.
Yeah, yeah. I don't remember anyone saying anything about windows.
Well, I remember a window, and I wanted to say, I thought, I want to say, at the time, he was thinking water would come in through the window. I mean, they have water issues anyways, because they're set low there. But I don't remember, I don't remember at the time them talking about visibility, aesthetic thing.
Did they change the plans at all, or, if it sat tight, they had to have a variance hearing?
They did have a variance hearing. The plans were changed a little bit, but the wall was always, the wall has not changed, retaining wall. I don't believe it's changed.
I remember the project, I think I was on the board of health when it started. I don't know that I was on the board of health when it finished, that, you know, the plan was endorsed.
You were on here.
Yeah.
This, I think this may have started prior to that, and we were doing some layouts, I think, of potential septic-
It goes way back.
Yeah.
You were doing that, I never saw it.
It goes back to like 2000.
It was never before this board.
Yeah. So I think I was involved, but I think once it came to the point where there's a definitive plan, that type of thing, I think you're right, I think I was with the planning board.
Well, you wouldn't have, probably, you guys issued the board of health grant of variances for setbacks. So you wouldn't have seen a final plan, because that would have been approved by the health agent.
Yeah. So-
Excuse me? Go first.
PSC, you know, their resource, both for the planning board and the board of health, you know, they're studying the potential benefit of maybe one of these fast systems in terms of trying to reduce perhaps some of the height for the leach field of the septic-
Just to sort of update you with regard to that, yeah, there was actually a bio-claire system approved at one point on the site. And the advantage of that is-
Zentia, excuse me.
You all right? It reduced the footprint somewhat of the system, but they're very expensive to install, they're very expensive to maintain. So the board of health is not currently requiring that that system be put in. We have taken a look at the plan, and-
So Jeff Kane did contact you or Wade?
No, this is just internal, but we, Wade and myself have looked at it. It does appear, and we're going to have a discussion with the design engineer, but it does appear that there are two or three options that would eliminate the need for the wall in its current location. You could probably move the wall back as much as 20 feet from the property line, using the components that they have, rearranging them, and getting further variances from the board of health with respect to, with respect to setback. There is also the option, in this instance, and it's concern about precedent, et cetera, but Mirror Lake Drive has a much wider right-of-way than has pavement. So there is the option of actually placing the bleaching facility in a public way, under an easement from the town. That would depend upon the mechanism for getting that easement. I'm not sure whether it's a town meeting action, or what the board of health, board of selectmen could do that if they wanted to. I don't know where the water main is in the street at this point. There has to be a 10-foot separation. That's an option which would require a variance from DEP, in addition to the local board of health, because part of the system would not be on the property. But it's possible. Snuggling the soil absorption system up at the front property line with a zero setback is an option. Reconfiguring, splitting the soil absorption system in two, and reconfiguring it would, is another option.
How far is it removed from the foundation or the slab? Is it slab or a foundation?
It's a foundation, and it currently has a variance to go to five feet for the septic tank. The soil absorption system has a variance to go to 13 feet from the foundation. The alternatives that would move the wall substantially away from the property line would require further variances, moving the soil absorption system closer to the foundation. I don't know exactly where at this point. But the wall is partially constructed at this point. And where this is, you know, where the Affordable Housing Committee is involved, you know, I'm not sure, you know, there's a lot of players involved. Conservation has jurisdiction over the entire, the 100-foot buffer goes beyond the property. The entirety of the property is within it. The wall is now about four feet off the property line. When the wall is completed, it will be at or above the window level on the house. And because it has such a high exposed face, it also needs a 42-inch pedestrian railing above grade. So it's, it's gonna be, you know, pretty much, yeah, pretty much the height of the, of the house.
Can it be set back? Can they, can they stagger the wall so it's not so obvious? No?
No.
Is this a breakout wall?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a breakout wall, plus that's where they have the driveway for the house over there. That's, with any of the options we're looking at, you'd move the driveway next to the house. You wouldn't have to level that area up. But there is a substantial cost of demoing some portion of the wall that's in place, constructing either another wall or other alternative measures. So it's, there's quite a bit of dollars involved here. But the wall is close to that property line. It is high, and there's no opportunity for, for landscaping, because as you said, there was a concern about drainage. So what the engineer has done, he's taken that four-foot strip between the wall and the property line, he's made a riprap swale out of it. So there's not even an opportunity to put any plants there, or anything else. The wall is, is a monolithic poured-in-place concrete wall, and there's no veneer on it or anything. I mean, it's just a blank concrete surface. It's, well, that's where we are at the moment. There are alternatives. I don't know-
Moving the tank and the field closer, would that be a DEP variance?
No. The only DEP variance would be if you used an easement in the public way. And that's, I don't think that's really necessary, but it is an option.
So if you do move it, I mean, what's the necessity of removing the wall that's there? I mean, is it, is it necessary to get rid of the wall that's there?
Well, the reason it could, and that was one of the, the alternative, where you snuggle up the soil absorption system to the front property line, which you'd probably do, is put an impermeable barrier, and then grade down, and instead of grading down to the formerly existing grade, you'd grade to the top of wall. That might-
You said it's only partially built.
It's built in its entirety in terms of the footing, and they came up, looks like they had a four-foot form, because they went four feet all the way around, but that's where they stopped. Yes, it's poured four feet high. But there's rebar sticking up out of that that goes another eight feet up, or something, so.
Yeah, I was told ultimately, it would be an eight-foot-high wall, another four feet, so double.
So four underground?
Yeah. They did the underground part. So it's going eight more feet, plus a 42-inch railing on top of that. And it's probably four feet from the property line.
And we're putting this into a two-bedroom affordable house?
Yes.
At a loss to the town.
Yeah, but, you know, certainly, the board of health is involved, the affordable housing folks are involved, the board of selectmen are involved, the conservation commission's involved. You know, there's not a single player that can make a decision here, so.
What was the, did the board of health themselves have a concern? Or is it just them getting the concern on behalf of the abutter?
Well, what happened is the abutter called, you know, Jim Leehan is the chairman of the board of selectmen. I think because he knew I came from the board of health, and I might have some knowledge of the project, even though I think it was the early days of the project, but he thought I might be able to facilitate. So, so I spoke to the abutter, and I spoke with Jeff Kane, and I spoke with Tom, and Scott Dietrich, who was in charge of the, yeah, he's involved with the affordable, the housing authority. So, you know, my involvement is most likely over at this point.
So the abutter's concern is just the wall? Is it the aesthetic portion, or is it just that the wall is there, in general? Have we gotten that? I mean, is it a matter of just putting an architectural finish, or?
Well, he told, he told me, you know, he'd look out his window and literally be looking into the wall. And I guess in terms of, you know, you know, some of the beauty of living on a lake is gonna be certainly lost. And he's doing, I think, what I think any of us would do if we were in that situation, trying to see if there's a-
Other option.
Another approach, and, you know, maybe, maybe there is, and maybe there's not. So, but, just, you know, really, really nice, nice person. I mean, had a very good conversation. He appreciated any help that, you know, we could bring. But-
So who's responsible for, no, I mean, parks and trails, or whatever they go, who's the, Walter Mailer's responsible for the houses? Addicts and corrals, that's it.
Yeah. So-
I'm so sick of that project.
So, is it Harvey? What's his, what's his, uh?
No, but who is responsible for the infrastructure? Is that part of the affordable build-out?
No, it's Howard Bailey. Howard Bailey-
It is part of that. It is part of it.
Howard Bailey, I think, was building the wall, and I'm told it wasn't a cease and desist, or something like that. He just said, okay, you know, give you folks some time to figure out, you know, what can be done here. And so I think that's the point, maybe last week, which the construction was suspended, you know, for some period of time.
But it has to go back to the board of health, because it was a board of health decision that, I mean, we based our decision on the affordable housing, on the fact that it was an approved lot by the board of health. I mean, that was, part of our decision was because of that. So we didn't look into any details of-
Why would we?
How, no, how tall the wall was, or anything else. All we knew was that it was approved. So now this comes out, so it has to go back to them, right?
It's, it's a board of health, I don't say problem, but it is. It's a challenge. It's a challenge that I'm sure they're gonna work through, working with PSC. But the fact that I was involved, I thought I, you know, I'd share it with the board. I mean, some of the folks on the board here, you know, Peter has prior experience with the board of health, as do I, and certainly PSC supports both, both boards. So unfortunate, yeah, of course, Betsy, yeah. Betsy, how could I forget Betsy? So, okay. Anything else, Tom, on that?
I'll just, right now-
I hope they can do whatever they can for the abutter, because if it's a geometry issue, or pushing, you know, minimizing the setbacks, you get into any tight areas, especially-
Yeah, it's a question of who, I'm presuming that the board of health, conservation commission, the town boards would be empathetic with the problem, would try to work it out. I am not clear at this point who would be responsible for the substantial financial commitment to modify it.
I mean, wouldn't someone, when they're planning a site, say, wait a second? We're putting a billboard up next to this person's window.
Maybe they never saw an elevation. Maybe they couldn't visualize a 2D plan into a 3D.
Well, no, I mean, he talked about it when he came here, the abutter. He was at that meeting and talked about the wall being in front of his window.
I don't, I don't remember that.
I know, it was a big crowd that night. I mean, the whole neighborhood was here. I remember.
Yeah. I mean, they brought it up, and I don't remember where we, I mean, we obviously approved it at the time.
I think it was a joint meeting, wasn't it?
It was. I think the, Jeff may have been here even, but I think also the municipal housing trust was here. And we discussed, I think, all the houses at the same time.
Right.
Or the, I mean, maybe not all of them, but the potential options for all the houses and what we were, potentially was going to be going on. And I know someone, if not the abutter, at least someone brought up about the retaining wall being there, and I don't know how we left it though. With, you know, was it...
You guys left it, that's real, that's under the jurisdiction of the board of health.
So, all right.
Well, I certainly remember once it became a conversation in the context of affordables, but back in my days at the board of health, that project came up, that parcel, I think it was that parcel, because you always remember when they're putting the septic in the front, you know, because of the lake in the back. And, and so I think it was that parcel, but that was the early stages which ultimately became, I guess, a definitive plan once it became part of this affordable.
That was prior to being owned by the town.
Yeah, correct. It was prior.
The septic system plan is old. That's been around for a while, so...
That's correct. And we talked with the applicant. He was trying to get some feedback. I don't even know if it was done formally. He wanted to hear from the board of health. So he came, and we gave, we said, how about a fast system that might help? But he was really, he had such a small piece of land and the elevations, and we were kind of, you know, trying to see if we could help him come up with a scenario which would make sense. And that's all I remember from the board of health.
But, you know, an IA system, although a problem solver, it's another utility bill, and that's...
In an affordable house, you don't want that.
It just doesn't work. Right. So that's, yeah, they...
You may have been on the board of health with me at the time, Peter.
I could have been. I could have been. Ten years.
Okay.
It sounds solvable.
I think they should go for whatever easements they need on setback relaxation they need.
Not if they don't have to remove the wall and everything.
Is the four feet that's there visually sort of objectionable? So...
It's a four-foot, I don't know exactly where a finished grade would go on the other side, but it's, it's just very close to their property, and it's a blank concrete surface. And if you make it eight feet higher, it's...
Oh, yeah. I mean, I was wondering if there's no, if you could leave what's there now, stop and redesign, but it sounds like you would potentially even want to remove some of what's there.
I think that would be my personal preference. I mean, part of the, part of what you can usually do with something relatively low is landscape in front of it and kind of hide it. But right now, we have a riprap slope which is barren of vegetation, so it's...
Well, is it necessary to have the riprap? Can, can part of the riprap be removed?
It's a low point in the roadway, and that's how the engineer, like, right now, there's water from the roadway ponding on his property. So his solution was to create a riprap swale and convey it down to the wetland behinds.
But if the grade were even with the top of the wall, you could have plantings that hang over from the top.
Yeah, well, that's true.
It would have to be a hefty plant.
Ivy.
Okay.
I'll thicken them all.
Wow. Have to drive by there and see this.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking the same.
Great.
Next meeting.
Just kidding, for the record, just kidding.
Next meeting.
Looks like there's not a whole lot on the, the future.
I'm pretty sure for the next meeting, we're pretty empty.
Should we wait until we have a new...
I don't think we set another date further out, correct, Bets?
Need to get in May?
So you, we can schedule one for February, and we can cancel if, you know, we don't have any business. I mean, we were very busy there for a period of time, and I think we do have a couple items that we said we were going to do before things picked up again in the spring. So I suggest we go ahead and schedule it. I mean, Andrea's not here, so I don't know where...
Well, I mean, I know that Andrea doesn't have to worry about school vacation weeks anymore. Now, you do, right?
I do because I'm away.
So what week is the school vacation week?
It is, um...
The 22nd?
No, it's actually the, yeah, the week of the 18th.
Oh, so it's the 18th to the 23rd or something like that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Oh, that was the week I was going to recommend that we have the...
That Thursday is when the town warrant closes.
Thursday of school vacation week?
February 21st.
And so we should meet before that.
The week before? The 21st is a Thursday?
It's Valentine's Day. It doesn't impact me, but just in case.
On which day? The Thursday?
Thursday, the 14th.
It's on a Thursday? Okay.
Just make sure your wife has her card on that morning.
I can't, you can't make...
Tuesday the 12th.
Well, we can do Tuesday, although, Gino, you...
I wouldn't be able to, but, you know...
Since we don't have any...
You don't have anything, right, right. The one thing I do have is to review the plans for Oak Knoll for endorsement, but I can have that, you know, ready for you. We can have Claudestreet tucked to your chair. Yeah, there you go.
I'm game for, let's see, that's the 12th. Yeah, I think I'm available the 12th that evening. It's Tuesday the 12th?
If we have nothing going on.
Tendentally, all right. Tuesday the 12th.
Okay.
Maybe you could, do you mind sending Andrea a note?
I don't mind at all.
So guys, if we have nothing of any substance, do you want to set a later meeting in the month?
Not a bad idea since we have no hearings scheduled for that day.
In this way, if it's just something that we need to accommodate, someone say, listen, it's minus 10. Come back two weeks from now.
Did you want to do it for the following week?
After the vacation week?
Vacation week, the 28th.
So schedule two right now, the 12th and the 20-whatever?
The 28th, right.
Thursday, the 28th.
And don't fill them both up with requests for hearings.
Right. Aim them to the 28th, Bets.
Yeah.
Just get some stuff for you to sign. One voucher.
That's it?
Yep, and then if you don't mind signing just the signature page for that special permit. Gina and I will make the amendment.
Greg, what do you think? Little Timmy's going to go down big with Mike McGolden?
Sounds it.
Yeah.
Please, half a million dollar legal just.
Button raising right up till the end.
Surprised he's still not doing it. He can. Well, let's see, freezes accounts.
Oh, okay. This is just the page we're signing because I was thinking...
This is the page we've got to make, depending on what changes.
Right. Little Miss Ortiz has to make up for her killing the MIT kid.
This will all be replaced.
I think they were just overzealous. I don't know what happened there. I'll tell you the story. I think they're just going to make a example out of them. That's all. I mean, he wasn't, he wasn't doing, I mean, he was, he was stealing the stuff, but it amounts to $50,000 worth of technical materials. I could give you a dozen names who did that insider trading this afternoon.
So to change the subject to something more positive, would you like to update us on how the blood drive, the results of the blood drive?
Collected 89 units of blood on January 5th, and five new individuals were added to the National Bowmer Registry. So it was good. And next year will be January 11th or 11th, one, thinking of adding a couple different things to make it even bigger and better, so...
We're proud of you. The planning board is proud of you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Okay, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second?
For discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for joining us, folks. Good night.